Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I appreciate you that you come up here and speak about this. I just want to say too, it is a complete honor to be the chief police of the city of Surprise, love this city. In saying that too, there's a component too where you've got to look at technological advances that our society is having and how that can impact the safety of our citizens, bring justice to the citizens that we have that are victimized within our community. And so we have to look at all the different programs that are available to us and Flock ALPR is one of those. And so what I want to do is just give you a brief overview of what that program is and answer any questions that you may have. Okay? So ALPRs are cameras that are primarily within traffic intersections that capture license plate images of vehicles that pass by. There's no individuals that are captured inside these images, it is just license plates and vehicle descriptions as they go by. What's unique about those things too is, so the officers that are on the streets, as these vehicles that potentially have some involvement with public safety concerns as they travel through these intersections and those images are captured, officers at times depending on what the crime is may be alerted to a public safety interest, for instance, like Amber Alert, those type of things. Another thing is maybe that vehicle's involved in a homicide investigation. The other side of that too is, so the network that Flock has created with these ALPRs throughout the valley, throughout the state, throughout the nation, if something happens in Scottsdale, for instance, that data could potentially be shared with us to keep our officers safe, to keep our communities safe in case a suspect comes into our communities and we can respond accordingly. So this is kind of a timeline of what this looks like and so as we obtain more Flock cameras for the ALPR services, we work with Flock to assign, okay, hey, this is a good intersection, to put one of these ALPRs up and then Flock will go and install those cameras on our behalf. Once those cameras are installed and they go live, they begin capturing images of vehicle license plates as they go by. Again, what that means to us is that we will get real time alerts from the officers, detectives, dispatchers and analysts that have access to the Flock system. So again, if a crime occurs within the city of Surprise and it has a public safety interest, our analysts can go inside of the program itself, upload a license plate number, for instance, one, two, three, A, B, C, and then see where that vehicle was last at if there was an ALPR camera at the intersection. These are specifically for investigatory use only. Again, the use outside of that for a public safety interest is not something that we support at all. It is specific to public safety, we have policies in place to mitigate those kind of things and then Flock as well has audits in place to make sure that these incidents don't occur where you have somebody misusing the system itself. And then also that's on the backend, so not only do you have the investigation that's current, but prosecution at the backend. And so we use these images and this data that we have to ensure good prosecution, good case for again victims that we have within our city to make sure that we bring justice to them. Obviously privacy concerns or something of noteworthyness. And so the images that the ALPRs are capturing, they're stored for thirty days on AWS Amazon Web Service System Server. They have all the same encryptions that the FBI asked for, that the C just asked for. So any kind of national database that has any kind of requirements for any kind of encryption, they're on board with that and they're complying with those things. There is no personal tracking that's associated with that, again, this is not an individual that we are looking, the ALPRs do not capture individuals, they capture a license plate, that's it. There are investigatory safeguards, like I said, there are in place, policies that we have at Surprise Police Department. And then limited use, again, public safety and so these aren't, so these ALPRs that we have would not be used for traffic violations, those kinds of civil offenses, it would just strictly be public safety criminal. And then I think this is noteworthy, especially to hit on too, some of the success stories that we have and so recently there was a residential burglary series that occurred in our city. Dozens and dozens of vehicle burglaries and residential burglaries that occurred. And so with the use of tips that we have from our citizens and the use of these cameras, we were able to capture license plates of people of interest and then go investigate further. And so I'm happy to say too that we made two significant arrests from that, able to get property back to our victims and just again, a great story for the system. The next one that I have here, a very tragic story, but again, when we're talking about bringing justice to the victims that we have within our city, this is definitely noteworthy, where family members are concerned about a mother, had not heard from them. Officers responded out to the residents, noticed that the mother's vehicle was gone. Using the information about the mother's vehicle, they plugged it into the ALPR system, found our suspect in WikiUp and then also they found the decedent unfortunately, but again, bringing justice to these families, that's what we're looking for here. And then probably the one that you've probably heard most of, I believe this is about a year and a half ago, one of our local McDonald's here, individual attempted to murder one of the workers inside of that restaurant, super, super tragic. Suspect got away, jumped into a vehicle, stole it. But again, I mean, what did we have at the time? We had a vehicle description, we had a license plate, so what did we do? We plugged that into the Flock system. And then luckily, one of our partner agencies, one of their sister agencies, was able to get a hit on that vehicle and was able to apprehend that suspect in Scottsdale Fashion Square. And so that incident in particular, you think about that individual, he was wanted, I believe it was homicide in New York City as well, gone to Florida, committed a couple different crimes and then ended up in our community. And then with the help of this program itself and that we were able to apprehend him, I mean, God knows what he would have done if we didn't apprehend him at that moment. And so these are just a few instances of the success stories that we've had with this system. But again, there's also the safety concern when it comes to our officers too, knowing what's around the corner potentially. And so there was another incident too where there was an attempted, or excuse me, armed robbery not too long ago, where the ALPR system was able to pick up on a license plate that we had associated with our suspect. Officers were able to strategically surround an area and then apprehend that individual successfully without any kind of harm. And so again, success story after success story with this program. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Councilman Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for coming to present this today. We had a resident that was concerned about the privacy implications of it. And one of the questions they had was, you know, this didn't come to council for approval. And before I ask, I don't even know how to ask that question, I think we have, council has given you a mandate to keep the community safe. We've instructed you and we've given you a budget to get the tools and the technology to make our community safe. So in your opinion, does this system make our community safer?
Thank you, Councilman Jeff. It absolutely does and again, you have to look at it from a technology standpoint. Every single industry throughout this nation, throughout the world, is advancing through technology and law enforcement is no different. What I will say is anytime that we are, that we do try to incorporate any type of new technology, I would recommend that, hey, as a law enforcement body, let's get out in front of it, let's let the citizens know what we're intending to do with this program, what the use is, the safeguards behind it, but yeah, absolutely, this program helps us keep safe, not only for the citizen's standpoint, but from an officer's standpoint too.
Okay, and I appreciate you coming here to help shed some light on what these actually do and how they can be used. And now if someone were to misuse it, there's penalties in place, what would happen if an officer, for example? I mean, there were some, there's some news articles that suggest that officers in different jurisdictions were misusing the data. So if that were to happen, what kind of penalties could we potentially expect?
So it could lead up to termination from the Surprise Police Department, again, it'd be a case by case basis. But again, the privacy of our citizens is near and dear to us and it's a major concern. So yeah, if there is misuse, that would be looked at. And definitely, again, like I said, it could lead up to termination from the Surprise Police Department depending on the circumstance.
Okay, and you mentioned there are safeguards in place to help prevent those types of things from happening or at least discover them if someone thinks they're being sneaky about it?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
So one question to follow up on the Councilman Jeff's question. So there's, how many people or officers, staff in the Surprise Police Department have access to the system? Just go on there and put whatever they want?
So if my memory is surging right, and I might look back at Gina here, she might have to answer this for me, but if my memory serves me correctly, all of our officers, our detectives, analysts and dispatchers do. And so when you're looking at totality of the number, I would venture to say, again, this is approximation. I'll let her answer, yes, she's right.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, we actually have four members of ours, of our police department working on real time information center that actually have full access. They have only four that actually can look at everything and anything. All of our other police officers can actually enter and hot list data. Incident occurs, you enter in a license plate member, you have information and then hot list, that's what we call it. Any other state or agency in the nation can actually pull that hot list information. And that's every officer can do that, you can put in hot list information, but only four have access to the entire system. We actually run audit controls as well and Flock runs audit controls as well and they look for abnormal entries and then they notify us. We have not had any at this point.
So you have to have a reason to, as one of those four, to be in the system to get the information? Like it's a need to know.
Yes, sir, actually, before you put any information in, when you go into the system and ask for reason, that reason is logged. See, we own the information for this city, so we go and we can look and we can see your reason. So you have to actually enter a reason in before you actually do the research.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilman Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the questions I was going to ask, who does have access, that was answered. But does it tell you which one of the four is looking?
Yes, it does.
To like kind of like a badge in to get in the building?
Yes, correct.
It'll tell you how often they're looking, so you can, if somebody really is looking at what I'm supposed to, it'll tell you exactly who it is?
Yes.
And then they'll ask, well, why are you doing that?
Yes.
So how often does it, like, does that report, like, do they send like a monthly of who's accessing it or just if somebody accesses it, they let you know who did it?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, specifically Councilmember Duffy? Yes, we can actually on demand go in and we can look. And there is actually a unit within Flock that actually looks at those twenty-four second. It's actually a financial division, audit division, we can actually run audits. If you ask for an audit, we can run it in seconds. We're looking at it constantly and it does tell us specifically who's auditing, who's requesting that data.
Okay, so you said that the information is stored for thirty days. So this question came up at our meeting. If you're driving to work every day the same route, is that camera taking a picture of your license plate every day so you'll never come out of the system?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Okay. How many other cities use this? Do we know?
Gina's expert on that, she has all these network connections and yeah.
Every state with the exception of one. Twenty billion plus plate reads per month. Forty-nine states, five thousand communities covered. Four thousand eight hundred connected law enforcement agencies to which we share with five fewer of us and we can share our information as well.
So that example, the McDonald's example, so Scottsdale uses the, which camera caught, was it even in our city that caught that?
I'm not, I'm not too certain.
Because I'm trying to remember the story now, because I remember he was parked in the parking garage at Fashion Square and if I remember, was planning to do something like that again.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, but I just don't remember if they said which camera caught it. Okay.
Councilor, that'd be that ride to Scottsdale.
Okay.
We went in, we went in, we said, we want to search for this license plate number, it said why? We said involved in an attempted homicide and it said, it was just picked up at a certain location.
Okay, so it did ask you why you wanted to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Gina. So as you've seen, as technology improves and computing power gets more powerful and storage abilities increase, AI recognition becomes more sophisticated, it's a, we find these useful tools, tools for, that are tool, or toolboxes for criminal justice. It does present concerns on privacy and civil liberties. And we, I think we do owe, we are obligated to be respectful and to do our best not to run afoul of the civil liberties of our residents. And in that spirit, and I know we have beaten this to death, but I'm going to bring it over time, there is, and this amounts to a mass surveillance system, does have, it does have restrictions. It does have, as you noted, we do not keep the information forever. It is, I think it's appropriate, thirty days, that seems pretty appropriate. And more importantly is the access to this data. And we've beaten this to death, but I'm going to say, I want to ask, I want to get delved into a little more and that is through access to this information, there must be some nexus, must exist. And I think it's important that the public know that, and if you can maybe speak to that, what kind of situations would satisfy the nexus to pull data?
So we touched on a couple with the examples, but again, it's a public safety nexus, that's what I phrase it as. Because again, when you look at Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts and then also potentially kidnapping, homicide suspects, burglary suspects, theft suspects, I mean, so those are the typical crimes that we're looking into. And then even the more minor ones too, where, I mean, the typical citizen, they could potentially get involved in a hit and run accident and so they deserve justice as well. And so this type of technology helps us find those suspects and again, bring justice to those victims.
Would there, last question, would there be any circumstance, so if there was a request to pull data and to observe data, but the stated reason did not meet the standards that we would, that we hold for, to satisfy a criminal investigation nexus, what, who would catch that?
Here, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, specifically Councilmember Mountain, that would be the Flock team, that would be the Walzard team. So we would see the request.
And see the stated reason for the question of that? Okay. Hi, thank you, Chief, thank you, Gina, appreciate it.
Councilman Bruber.
Thanks, Mayor. What do you think the chances are that the cases you mentioned would have been solved as timely as they were without this technology? That you're a gambling man? I mean, it's just an ethereal thing, but is there anything better out there that could have helped your investigators solve this? Or is this really the end all be all for tech right now?
So I mean, it's great piece of technology, absolutely, and so do I think it had some significance behind us apprehending a suspect? Absolutely, absolutely.
So better than like a psychic or a crystal ball? Okay, that's all I need, thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for putting this together. You know, I think that you said something to me when we talked a while back and it was, you know, you're always chasing technology, right? I mean, obviously, technology has come a long way and it always, I remember talking to my dad growing up and I was like, like, don't you think, like, you know, Batman, you know, always joke, like, you're black from the TV, it's not that old, but, like, it gets, it gets better, but it's, it's been getting extremely advanced lately. You take a look at some of the things like AI as a whole, it's kind of scary, you know, when you, when you think about it. And so it's good to ask questions. I think it's, it's generally good to question your government. I don't think it's a bad thing, I think transparency is important. Do you know how much this specific program costs? Is it like a hundred and twenty thousand or something? I mean, like, did the capital cost, obviously, there's a little bit ongoing, but do you have, do you have the numbers on that?
I do, I'll turn that over to Gina as well, she's involved in that.
No, of course, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, we actually pay approximately three, I don't want to say approximately, three thousand dollars per camera, because it's going to be three hundred. And the software that we pay approximately fifteen thousand plus tax for, so we're using that software, but it is an annual pacer.
Okay, so obviously, that's like, you know, thousand dollar, like, that's a lot of money. Obviously, in the city budget, it'd be a nearly one billion dollar budget. The police budget itself, if I got the numbers correct, are, is about fifty-six million. And it sounds like, and I calculate based on a hundred and twenty thousand, but it sounds like maybe even less than that is spent on this. So it makes up about, what, like, I think I calculated, it was like point zero zero two. And I had to like, think like, is that one hundredth, I'd like to ask a math teacher or something, a one one hundredth of a percent. And it's, and it's saved lives, you know, objectively. Now, obviously, it's a balance, you know, between safety and freedom. I used to teach government civics and, you know, John Locke talked about, like, I believe it was John Locke, it's been a little bit, but I talked about the idea of a social contract, right, where we have, you know, freedoms and there's, there's specific, you know, freedoms like that maybe gets sacrificed for the greater good and I think those should be few and far between. But like, like, hey, we all agree generally not to commit murder. Yeah, is that a, you know, is that a freedom that you could say that you're giving up? Yes, but it, you know, it's obviously makes society better and that's obviously, you know, a different example. But I think that part of our job is to maximize our, the bang for our buck and that's like one aspect of what we do. And so it's a relatively small amount to spend on, you know, something that could save lives. So when is this type of technology used? Because I would say if hypothetically, if we were, you know, showing up at someone's door to say, hey, you know, we got you earlier today to, you know, change, you changed lanes on the blinker, you know, type thing, like, obviously, that would be a little bit of like, I mean, I don't even know what the term, like, obviously not okay in my opinion. So when we talk about using these Flock cameras, what are situations that we would use them for? Obviously murder, like, just kind of bigger, like, what, is there a protocol in place, like, where we, you know?
So yeah, the Surprise Police Department does have a policy in place that guideline or that outlines the specific crimes or instances that we would use the ALPR system. So again, like, touch on homicide would definitely be one of those. I mentioned before, like, Silver Alert, Amber Alert, those type of things, kidnapping.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I think that it's obviously showed it can, it can catch murderers. So what type of protections are in place, right? So if I'm an officer and I want to access the data, right, is it just like a computer? Like, do I have to enter my badge number, do I have to give a reason? Like, like, what is the, you know, I think some people think that maybe, like, we just have it, like, you know, pulled up and it's just like on a big screen, we have all these photos, but in reality, it's a little bit of a process, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor, these things, we use a two factor, multi factor system, something you know, something you have, something you are. Those are the actual password requirements that you have to enter into this cloud based system. So there's password protected times two.
Okay, and we have access, like, we can see who's access to, you know, when, like, search history, stuff like that's on there. There's, you know, accountability, because again, like, there are stories of where, you know, bad actors and I don't think we have any in Surprise and frankly, there's, you know, a ton in Arizona and the country, but it does happen, you know, so obviously, you have that layer. So on the Flock website, it says that the user specifically, so like in this case, the city of Surprise, determines who has access to this data, whether it's shared specifically, whether it's shared just automatically, kind of like an automatic, maybe automatic aid system like Fire does or something. And I think some cities do that. So from my understanding, we do not like have an ongoing sharing going on with anyone, correct? It's a case by case basis where like if we have someone, like, an obvious horrible situation, like, you know, if it's Amber Alert, you know, obviously, someone's on the loose, then we would of course share it. But it's not something where someone can just log in and see, you know, what cars have gone on Bell Road Day or something, you know?
Partially correct, sir.
Okay.
We share with all, all law frequencies in the state.
Login, okay.
But again, they put in a hot list item, they put in a search criteria, they state the reason why and then they're allowed to proceed.
Okay, so obviously, how you access that is not just like, kind of like a, you know, some people scroll on Facebook and they're just kind of going through stuff, it's a bit of a process, okay?
Yes, sir, they have to have the actual same, same qualifications to log in on their end as well.
No, absolutely. You know, I think this kind of, I mean, really just kind of comes down to if you trust police officers or not. And I hear a lot of people say that, like, you know, I support police or, I mean, we talk about this in small business, right? It's like, oh, you know, I, you know, I support police, but, or there's always like a but, like, oh, but I don't like this, but I don't like that, you know? And so for me, I have zero years, zero days of experience as a police officer. Now, as an elected official, we have to represent constituents and, you know, ask questions. But I don't think it's healthy to, and obviously, like, there are stories of, you know, one or two officers and, you know, a different state, you know, maybe, maybe taking advantage of it. But I feel like police is the only profession where one officer can make even a hint of a mistake or be accused of a mistake. And society judges the entire, you know, law enforcement community as a whole across the country as, you know, bad, which I, which I don't agree with, but I don't think we should make decisions based off of, like, you know, a few bad actors. So anyways, we say in our strategic plan, we ask our police officers, and I think it's not a police department on the fire truck, always there, always right, and we say in our strategic plan, we want police to keep us safe. And so we're very limited on the council of what involvement we have. Obviously, we have a city manager, he delegates to, you know, staff and you guys run the data options. And this is one area where we can not even just assist, but not, you know, ask questions, but not, like, get in the way of, you know, saving someone's life. And I don't, I couldn't live with myself if there was somebody on the loose, like, right, so that, you mentioned it. A person went to McDonald's under green light rings with a knife, went into the woman's bathroom, already crumbled, takes the knife and stabs the woman in the neck, you know, how many times, leaves, is on the loose in Surprise. And for us not to be able to use all the resources at our disposal to catch this person? I mean, I couldn't live with myself if I had set policy, that obviously it's a balance, right? But that made it, like, if that was, you know, reflective policy we made, that is something, you know, we affect. So anyways, I do think that transparency is important. I think a lot of cities did implement this and I look to kind of other cities did, a lot of them, it didn't go to capitals, kind of, well, obviously, it was included in the budget, part of the budget process. And I think it kind of became a little more political kind of after the fact. So I think this is still important, you know, I think it's good to, you know, tell residents, you know, kind of what we're doing and to ask questions, but ultimately, we appreciate all the work, you know, you guys are doing. And Chief, I think you've done a great job so far and it's going to continue, so, yeah.
All right. Chief, thanks for your presentation. Obviously, my perspective kind of comes from public safety and we're in two different avenues, obviously. But I have noticed a change even since I've been on, and it hasn't been that long, of the technology available to us tasked with keeping communities safe. And I can tell you when, before I even started, we were doing charts, EMS charts on paper and then we switched to iPad electronic systems and some of the old timers wanted to chuck the iPads out of the trucks, so we got them there. But what I noticed is the way we do business to keep our communities safe has changed dramatically over, I mean, the last couple of years. The way we're resuscitating patients, the way we're documenting those treatment efforts, the way you're and officers are not only keeping each other safe, but our community safe has changed so much. I do believe, and this is the benefit of community meetings, is that, this is a good question. No piece of technology that we in the public safety field utilize should ever be above scrutiny. If it is a great piece of technology that is truly going to keep our residents safe, then we should be able to ask questions and have this presentation. So I appreciate you both, you two, Gina, of being able to be up here and answer a lot of the questions that I had and I cross out, my colleagues ask. I think overall, the resident, a resident that doesn't really know about the technology or the safety of said technology, their concern is, if you, we're all human beings and we are not without flaws. Firefighters aren't without flaws, police officers aren't, none of us are without flaws. And so I think we always go to the worst case scenarios. We have this piece of technology that identifies license plates, doesn't identify who's driving the car, correct? It just identifies the license plate. But I think the very real concern, what's your worst case scenario? If I have someone that does not like me, that has access to this technology, my concern would be, are they going to use that technology to harass me and issue a traffic violation? And so I appreciate you clarifying what this is, because when I, when I heard your presentation, my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is this technology will be utilized really for life safety matters. It's not going to be those petty offenses used to harass a resident that maybe spoke up against. It's not going to be those petty offenses used to harass a resident that maybe spoke up against an officer or law enforcement community as a whole. This technology is really utilized as another tool for you and your officers. One, to make sure you guys make it home to your families. But two, to make sure that everyone that's living within our community, that visits our community is, is able to be safe. And if, God forbid, something happens, you guys have the resources available to bring justice to those families. And, and so I really appreciate that. Just bear with me for a second, cause I wanna make sure I didn't leave out any questions that may not have been answered. Okay, so I guess my only question that hasn't been answered, and you kind of mentioned it, so the company itself is able to perform audits. But we also have the ability to perform audits. And so can you talk a little bit more, so is there multiple different agencies that are able to perform these audits? So there's not just one agency that we're just a hundred percent trusting?
Councilman, we, we have to track it. Our, so our Flock partners, they perform the audits. Police department does not perform the audit, because that's a concept of interest, and we have to segregate those duties. So it will be the important IT administrators who run the audits. And we're off, we would be notified by the Flock partnership of, of some type of an, an audit.
And so essentially, anyone that would potentially be accessing that piece of technology to do ill will against a resident, they're not gonna be performing an audit on themselves. We're gonna have different safeguards to perform that audit.
Absolutely correct.
And that's, we're not limited. We can do that whenever there's a suspicion of that's occurring, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then Chief, just if I, I'm understanding correctly, you already have a policy in place that if we have an instance where this technology is being abused, that, that will be dealt with?
Yeah, so that would be a violation of that policy if they weren't using this program, what's in the criminal justice nexus.
Uh, okay, so that was, I think that was pretty much my only question. I, I really do appreciate this, and it's been mentioned before, anytime we're utilizing technology, there's always a risk. I know when we had my daughter, we had, it's our first born child, so we had every piece of technology available. We monitored her breathing, how often she blinked her eyelids, everything. And then what comes up is also the concern is who, who can abuse that technology in a harmful way? And so there's always a balance. But what I always come back to is, you know, in my other job, the community and elected officials of that city trust me to make decisions that are gonna keep the community safe. I don't have, you know, a city council member, a mayor, a city manager sitting on the fire truck asking why I'm going offensive or defensive in a structure. And I think it really still applies here to you all. I think we should scrutinize the technology, we should ask the questions, and we should make sure the safeguards are in place. But at the end of the day, already, we are trusting you and the men and women who protect our community, whether it's 2 P M or 2 A M. To make a split second decision to either save a life or to take the life in the preservation of safety of all others around them. We already trust you to do that. And so, again, we can scrutinize the technology, but if we're able to trust you guys to use lethal force potentially to save our community member. We should also make sure that we're trusting you to utilize every piece of technology available. Because the last thing I think any of us want is, if God forbid, someone takes someone's child, and you have this opportunity to have this technology to track that person down. And we're gonna utilize it, I think that's something that we're all gonna need to sleep over. So thank you again for your presentation, for being so informative on these questions. Go ahead, man, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Gruber?
Really quick, just for those who are just joining us. Gina, so people don't think that you're like this IT lady who holds people out with Microsoft Word or Outlook. Can you remind everybody what your current challenges are in the IT world?
I'm the Chief of Information Security Officer from the city of Surprise. I am a member, and I'm a member of the Homeland Security Cyber Security Task Force. And I'm a member of the U S C's Homeland Security Grant Committee. I'm the chair of that committee.
Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, sir.
For sure. Chief, I have a couple of questions. Who's the decision maker on the criteria to pull the license plate information on the level of crime? Is there a working group you have? Is it best practices? How do you build that list of crimes that meet the criteria to pull the information?
So are you asking, so who would be running that?
Well, who's, who's the decision maker on figuring out what the criteria, what the level of crime is to pull that information? Like a felony, Mr. Mayor?
So it is best practices, so we're a part of Kalia, that's our accreditation, a lot of times we lean in on them for those best practices.
Okay, appreciate it. And I think there's a balance between, you know, safeguarding your city and, you know, privacy. And I feel like what you presented tonight demonstrates that. There's a lot of safeguards in place, and I think by and large, residents support the police. I think they support powering the, the police to do what they have to do to catch the bad actors in our city. And, and I think we have to do everything we can to make sure that we have a safe city. So I appreciate you coming and presenting, Gina, I appreciate you, and seeing other questions or concerns, so, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, could you read item number three?